Manager did not take a concession is incorrect. He has taken concession several times. First of all, when he was hired here, he took a concession. Then through the years, he has, and then again, when all of the exempt employees took a 10 percent increase, he did too. So, again, there's been misinformation that is repeated again and again and again. All the transit center information has been provided in writing and out loud many times. We still get people that come and ask the same thing, just to repeat it over again. And it's very unfortunate. Several people have said, "Come to things on Thursday." Well, I'm saying, "Come on Wednesday to the community center for the State of the City address." And I will be addressing many of those things. Counsel, Mayor Protem Curwen?
I think it might be do us well to go back to our, we first heard from our state representative, Marty Nolenberg, who talked about the state being unable to do things the same way. And we've recognized that in this city for a long time. Are residents upset at government in general? I would say they are, because things have changed. They've changed drastically at every single level, starting at the state. And he cited some of the cuts today. I noticed that he didn't cite one that does impact us greatly, and that is our revenue sharing cut. So, when we have folks who are talking about, gee, where did it go? Forty percent gone, and that's anticipated to go on in the future as well. So, we have had to change everything that we do in the city. And it started, not first with a concession, Madam Mayor, if I may correct you on that, but an offered change in salary from our own city manager, who saw when he came in and looked at the numbers and recognized what that meant offered that, and has taken subsequently five percent, five percent, and here we are again, where everyone in this room and everyone in the city has taken a 10 percent hit, or more. And that's just this year. So, this idea that nothing has changed is simply false on its face. Marty Nolenberg, excuse me, State Representative Nolenberg also cited that money has been set aside by the state and put in a rainy day fund so that they can achieve AAA bond rating. Well, I think that's notable. Please also observe that this past week in the paper was pointed out that Oakland County has $79 million set aside. We have seen our 10 percent or more concessions here in this city, they have been on a pay freeze. And it's anticipated that they, in fact, will see an improvement of 1 percent the following year. That's at the county level. An emergency fund of $79 million, I don't see people banging on the doors of the county executive or the frozen wages, whereas we have taken concessions and continue to use all the tools we have in our collaborative bargaining to achieve the greatest expertise that we can see, the number-one fleet in Northern America, despite giving back as much as they have already. Another speaker talked about a family-friendly city. I noticed that talk about family-friendly city, our sister city Novi was this week cited as top 10 in family. I believe that they recently passed, what? A diligent support of their library. They do have a library, and it's one thing that families do look for. That does matter, as we try to attract both businesses and families to come into the city. A library does matter, and a library has costs. And it's a monthly cost of $200,000 to operate that library. Four employees, four full-time employees, four full-time employees, some part-time employees, and volunteers see to it that we have a library that is available six days a week to our residents. So, this idea that nothing has changed, everything has changed in every department. That flyer that keeps coming out where they hold up, "Look at these 20 sellers," we don't even have those positions anymore. That's false and misleading, going back to 2009. It's important to imply that nothing has changed when everything has changed, and we have made those decisions going forward. I think I have a question I would like to, if I may, for our attorney, because there was a reference that we're not even sure if this dedicated millage would be used for that library. And I'd like you to address that, please.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, absolutely. It will be used if it is passed by the voters. It has to be used for the library. It cannot be used for any other purpose.
Are there any other responses to public comment for this evening? Councilman Howelak?
I only jumped in, I wanted to follow up on that. The millage request, is there anything that requires that that .7 mills operates a six or a seven-day library 50 or 60 hours a week? Or does it just provide the funding for a library?
Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, and I will certainly defer to management if necessary, but if you're speaking as to the brochure, the brochure really is explanation. It really does not deal with the ballot question. It was designed to inform the voters of how counsel was feeling about what counsel's decisions were going to be, depending on what happened with that ballot proposal. And it was designed as an informational piece. So, no, there is, the specific ballot question itself does not have any mandates in it. It just states whether or not people will support a .7 mill to support the library for a five-year period.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Belltramin?
Piggybacking back on that, I appreciate your patience. I was not here when the brochure was passed, but it is my understanding that it was a discussion, and counsel said, "On August 5th, that library will close." Conversely, if the millage passes, we expect the 2011-2012 library to be a mirror of the 2010-11 library. If there is no requirement for that based on that brochure, I would like to see a resolution in front of this council at the next council meeting to ratify those decisions, so that the people do know that that's what we mean.
The 55 hours that they've been operating is because that is what the state requires in order to receive some state funding. It is not a great amount, but it is something that is required. It is also something I believe that has to do with our reciprocity with other libraries, where we can use materials, check out materials from other libraries. So, that is why the 55 hour has been necessary for us.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Slater?
I would just like to support that resolution for next week. I think it's important to pass that message so it's clear to the residents.
Yes.
And I'd like to thank the officers for being here tonight. And you've heard firsthand a lot of crap tonight. And I know it's rumors to you folks sometimes, but you heard it tonight, you know? Go back and tell your fellow officers the crap that we have to listen to here every other Monday. And thanks for coming tonight. And thanks for taking 10 percent.
Or more.
Or more.[523.32][523.32](APPLAUSE).
We should soon get to that item, yes.
I had another item while.
Yes, go ahead.
In speaking of the brochure, and I want to make sure that I've been telling people properly, when we put the resolution language together for the ballot, we were told that we had to include, and this is this much toward the Downtown Development Authority, and this much toward Brownfield, and this much toward the LDFA. As people look at that ballot issue, they say, "I don't want my library dollars to go to development. I don't want them to go to the Smart Zone." It is my understanding that that is the calculation of what this .7 mills would bring as a tax increase from the properties affected, and that by law has to stay within those districts. Is that right?
Mrs. Blum?
Yes, the amounts are necessary. It was required, the ballot language does require identification of that, again, the transparency, so that the voters know exactly what the money will go for. And there is no way to opt out, so.
But no residential taxpayers' money will go toward the Downtown Development Authority or the Brownfield Recovery Authority or the Local Development Finance Authority. Is that right? That money is only from those properties within those districts.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Those business properties within the, because when.
There are no residential properties in any of those districts.
Right. Because the millage is required of everyone, whether it's a business or residential property within the city, when they're taxed. But the capture of certain dollars for those entities is required by law from those business areas. And if you look at the dollar amounts, it's very small compared to the amount of monies that will go toward the library. But the wording is necessary to be in there, and so therefore, we have provided that. So, anyone else? Councilwoman McGinnis, I think you signaled, and then Councilman Fleming?
I just had a couple of comments to make, and one was that I just wanted to refer back to the conversations that we had when we determined what language we would put on the ballot. And the number that was determined wasn't a number that we pulled out of thin air, but was directly related to the cost of running the library at the reduced level that we've been running it at for 55 hours. So, we actually spent quite a bit of time trying to calculate exactly what that would be, and that is where that number came from. So, I do believe that it would be the intention of counsel, that if the millage passes, that we would be operating the library that was described on the informational brochure that went out. My other question, well, I could spend all day really going through some of the comments that were made, but I did want to thank the representative from the Chamber of Commerce for coming. And I think that their endorsement of the millage and their additional request for strategic planning is something that gives us a great long-term plan, and I think that Kathy Ross would definitely be up for that challenge. So, I appreciate that endorsement. And then I just wanted to bring it back to the original, the first person that commented regarding enforcing the lawn sprinkling ordinance, because there was a specific question about what we are going to do to enforce this. Obviously, I believe that we need to do something before it becomes an issue, and our water rates are affected, and we'll have a whole slew of people that are here to talk to us about that. So, we have the opportunity to do something about it, and I just wanted to hear from management in terms of what we are going to do.
When I observed several businesses that had their sprinkling, in-the-ground sprinkling system on during the day, I phoned those in and asked that staff contact those people to let them know the times that they're supposed to do it. And that is for just in-the-ground sprinkling system. If you have new lawn or new landscaping put in, you can water those, that is allowed. If you have, as I don't have an in-the-ground sprinkling system, we've been here so long, we never put one in, I'm allowed to sprinkle with my little sprinkler by hand. I also have a rain barrel that I use for special plants that I want to water. So, there are, I'm allowed to do that at times, but I'm not using the volumes of water that are used if people are using their in-the-ground sprinkling systems and not monitoring them to a certain time. I believe that Mr. Riznick wants to speak on this. Is that correct, Mr. Zerlach?
If he wants to or not, I've asked him to go to the microphone. Respond to any questions.
I'm sure he will. Mr. Riznick?
A few years ago, when this ordinance was put in place, it was with the idea that what we wanted to do was shift the majority of underground water sprinkling to between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. We have done that. We consistently watch the monitoring of all of the water used on an hourly basis, and we continue to shift that. We, at the time, were instructed by counsel to educate, not penalize. We continue to do that. Every year, we've sent out many notices to homeowner associations. We put it on cable, do it in mailings and the water bill, a notice of that. We've done the education. We get new people that come into businesses operating those systems. We have to re-educate continually. Sometimes, when you see the sprinkling systems going, they're doing repairs. They have to operate them. Not all the time, but we get calls on that quite often. People say, "Yes, we know, but we had our sprinkler repair company out." It is effective, but when you have 11 days of virtually no rain and 80 to 90-degree temperatures, volumes go up. I believe it was 45 million gallons on Monday morning, this morning, was our peak. At 5:00, it was down to 37.2 million gallons. So, you can see where our peak was, and we're getting close. We did this additional information, but we still are educating people every day. We're sending out notices, we're stopping and talking to them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Zerlach?
Thank you, Your Honor. There was also an issue mentioned about the city requiring a boulder in lieu of a fence, and I'd like Mr. Miller to respond to that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I am familiar with that development owned by Stuart Frankel Companies and John R., and the boulders were chosen to act as bollards. And if you ever looked at federal buildings, they always have barriers around the building. We did not put red tape up then, it was their choice to have the boulders.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to clarify. Yes, Councilman Fleming, I guess for the floor?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes.
Several people tonight spoke and referred to our reserve fund balance. We all know we need a reserve fund balance, the question is how much? One of the speakers, Mr. Bloomingdale, referred to the ICMA report specifically. I'm trying to recall, did the ICMA recommend a fund balance percentage or not? Because I don't recall that. I think we all know we need a fund balance, reserve balance, but did they recommend a specific percentage that we're following?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'll just go back and take a look at the report. There's a general protocol that indicates about a 17 percent fund balance. I think that's advanced by the GFOA, Government Financial Officers Association. Again, I'll take a look at the ICMA report and see if they mention anything on a fund balance.
I don't recall.
Hey, Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
What's the projected percentage of our fund balance in our third year of the budget?
It's going to be at 13 percent.
13 percent, I believe, is the number.
I think.
And that's if we don't touch it. That's if we don't touch it.
The use of undesignated unreserved funds in the next two budgets is being used to balance and to pay for budgetary needs that are necessary within that. And that's why it's important for people to look at the three-year budget, not just look at the first year, but to look at the three-year budget. And there are certain priorities that we set out, for example, on a police department, that we said, "We want monies to stay because we want to have a certain number of officers be able to stay within the force." There are a number of things that are designated in those next two budgets, and that's why monies are going to continue to be transferred in. So, if people will look at the three-year budget, again, I'm going to talk about it on Wednesday. Anybody else on this?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
Bring this up just as food for thought, but, you know, I was pointed over to the school district's website, and they have a 42-page file, PDF file, that I downloaded from their website called Detroit School District's Salary and Benefit Transparency Reporting. And it has the title, clearly not the name, so as to provide a certain amount of privacy for the employees. But what it does is it lets the constituents of the school district know the salary and benefits of all of the workers. And I thought it would be interesting if we did something similar, but we could actually take it a step farther and show the before and after the pay adjustments. And so, that way, when there's a question as to whether or not, you know, there's a salary reduction or a benefit reduction, then folks can go to the horse's mouth and see the actual hardcore numbers. And I would actually like to see if that's something that counsel or management might be interested in.
Further comments about public comment? I'd like to get to the business items that I have people here for also, yes.
Just wondering if Councilmember Fleming might want to clarify. A couple speakers mentioned that you had submitted a budget. I didn't know if perhaps you'd like to clarify.
Okay. I seconded the budget that Councilman Howelak submitted that night, and we discussed it briefly at the table. And he had emailed me that prior to the meeting, and I had reviewed it, so I knew the numbers, and I made sure the budget balanced and so forth, but I supported that budget that night.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Belltramin?
During council comments, I'd like us to discuss Councilman Howelak's suggestion. Thank you.
All right, we'll go on with regular business now. The first item is boards and committee appointments to Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Local Development Finance Authority. And I submitted those names last week. There was an adjustment of the names matching up with the term expirations, and they've been corrected in the agenda. Is that correct? They have not been corrected in the agenda?
Printed agenda, no, but online, it was corrected online in the electronic version.
Right. So, I'd like to read from those in order to get it correct for the record here, because some of them are reappointments, and their terms should follow, and some of them are new appointments, and they fall into those slots where the other people went off. Okay, so for Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, excuse me, Alan Neal for the term expiring 4/30/2013, Bruce Wilbring for the term expiring 4/30/2013, Robert Schultz for the term expiring...
No, Schwartz.
Schwartz, excuse me, use those glasses here. Robert Schwartz, the term expiring 4/30/2014, James Campbell, term expiring 4/30/2014, and Ramsey Dello for the term expiring 4/30/2014.
Second.
And, well, let me do the local finance authority here. Maureen Donahue-Cross for the Oakland County designee, John Sharp for the term expiring 6/30/2014, Nick Vitale, the term expiring 6/30/2015, and Robin Beltrini for the term expiring 6/30/2015. Moved by the chair, do I have a second?
I'll support that.
And seconded by Mayor Protem Curwen. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
Move to separate, please.
Okay.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Howelak and seconded by Councilman Fleming that we separate and have two votes, one on Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and one on Local Development Finance Authority. Discussion of the move to separate the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Motion passes to separate. Okay, the first vote on Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, those five members, some reappointments and some new appointments.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Local Development Finance Authority, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
No.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Those folks then will be notified of when their first meeting will occur, and any other papers they have to sign or anything. Okay. I three is a request for closed session.
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
I will move the resolution, be it resolved, that Detroit City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15268C, Strategy for Labor Negotiations, and MCL 15268E, City Attorney Evaluation.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Howelak, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrini, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I four is an application regarding a liquor transfer of ownership for a name change within the Hollywood supermarket, and we have, guess what? We changed our rules now. What's that? We don't call on you to come up and speak now. Was it the other time? But hello. It's nice of you to be here. If a council member has a question, we probably could call you, but I don't know that they will. Okay, I four A and B, the transfer of ownership, do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed, both A, Transfer of Ownership, and B, the Agreement.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Mayor Protem Curwen, that we approve resolutions A and B. Do we have discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I should explain that I didn't say anything in the beginning of public comment, but comments on agenda items can come up during the council comment section, and it was in the bulletin here, and I thought perhaps Mr. Welsh's attorney might have told him, but I didn't think to tell him ahead of time, so I hope you will explain how we do that. Okay, next, we have the ratification of the 2008-2013 contract extension to 2015, and the approval of the early retirement incentive program for the Troy Police Officers Association. I'll move the resolution.
Support.
And I'd like to read that. It's rather lengthy, but I think it's important for those at home to know, this is a very important agreement. Whereas a tentative agreement has been reached between the city of Troy and the TPOA extending the 2008-2013 contract to June 30, 2015, and whereas Michigan's continuing rising unemployment and reductions in the taxable value of real estate are adversely affecting the city of Troy's operating revenues, whereas Michigan's continuing economic distress has led city's management to project significant budget shortfalls for fiscal years 2011, 2012, and 2013, whereas economic uncertainty demands that the city of Troy government reduce operational expenses while improving efficiency and effectiveness. Whereas one recognized means of reducing operational expenses while simultaneously creating opportunities for reorganization and restructuring is to provide a voluntary separation incentive for city employees to retire. Whereas approximately 14 Troy Police Officers Association members will meet the eligibility criteria for retirement from city employment as of June 30, 2011, and 14 Troy Police Officers Association members are within five years of meeting the eligibility criteria for retirement from city employment as of June 30, 2011. Whereas the proposed early retirement incentive program has been reviewed and is recommended by city management as a mechanism to reduce workforce levels, create, position vacancies, and provide city management with the opportunity to reduce costs, reorganize, and restructure operations. Therefore, be it resolved, the Troy City Council hereby authorizes implementation of the following early retirement incentive program to be offered to the Troy Police Officers Association members who will be eligible to retire, who are within five years of eligibility on or before June 30, 2011, provided that the program is economically beneficial to the city of Troy. And be it further resolved, that the early retirement incentive program may be offered during a minimum 45-day window of opportunity, with said incentive being the option of a lump. during a minimum 45-day window of opportunity, with said incentive being the option of lump sum payment of $1,000 for each full year of retirement service as of June 30th, 2011, or the conversion from a DC pension plan to a DB pension plan. And be it further resolved, that funding for the early retirement cash incentive program shall be obtained from funds made available in the department's budget. And funding for the early retirement DC to DB program shall be obtained from funds contained in the members' DC accounts. And be it further resolved, that employees in the defined benefit and defined contribution retirement plans desiring to participate in the early retirement incentive program must file written application to retire no less than 30 days in advance of their requested retirement date, but shall be no later than November 15th, 2011, with the employee's retirement system on the appropriate form. And be it further resolved, that the lump sum early retirement incentive pay shall not be included in the final averaging compensation, average compensation for employees on the defined benefit plan. Contributions will be made to an employee's defined contribution plan or defined benefit plan by the City of Troy and the employee as a result of this lump sum payment. Be it further resolved, the Troy City Council hereby authorize city management to negotiate participation in the early retirement incentive program with represented employee's retirement system members in collective bargaining proceedings. And be it further resolved, that a two-year extension of the 2008 to 2013 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Troy and the TPOA, Troy Police Officers Association, for the period July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015, as presented, is hereby ratified by the City Council of the City of Troy, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the final agreement.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin. Discussion of the item?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Beltrini?
Question for management. The funding for the early retirement cash incentive program will all come out of the police department budget, will it not?
Yes.
Then, the fifth paragraph from the bottom, there needs to be an editorial change. The comma needs to be put between the T and the S, and the plural of budgets needs to change. It's been cut and pasted too many times. I didn't want any other department to feel that they were responsible for this. Thank you.
Okay. I've got it.
And thank you all, truly.
With those changes, then, Councilman Kerwin, do you agree?
I do.
Mr. Zerlag, would you repeat again where we're changing it? On the, be it further resolved?
It's the fifth paragraph up from page six, one, two, three, four, five. Department's budgets will be T apostrophe S will be possessive for the police department.
Right.
And, may I say something?
Yes, Mr. Zerlag?
Council knows this, but I'm not sure the community does. And that is that this contract is an extension. It originally was solid until June 30th, 2013. And when Chief Mayor and I sat down with the membership and asked to open up their contract, they could have told me to take a walk, and they'll catch me in about, you know, a little over two years, but they didn't. They understood the importance of a partnership with the balance of the organization, as well with the community. And I just wanted to personally thank them for their effort. It saved us, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was just by opening the contract, that was a savings of over $850,000 per year, a check that we do not now have to write. And just wanted to thank those individuals in the department that voted yes. I sincerely appreciate all of your efforts, as well as the great work that you do. Also, if I may, I'd like to ask Mike Geissi, who's the president of TPOA and was also on the negotiation team, if he wanted to say a few words, if he may?
Okay. Before you start, I'd like to express appreciation also for the time and effort of the TPOA negotiating team and the staff that worked on negotiating the contract, and for the members in accepting the final agreement after everything was worked out. We, as a council, do know that your contract did go for two more years, and we appreciate the efforts in bringing it forward early so that we could achieve this. We're trying to do the best that we can. We do appreciate everything that the police officers do each and every day, and certainly feel that the salaries that they receive and the benefits that they receive are well-earned and certainly appreciated.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor, just a couple of quick things. Myself and the 15 men and women behind me, we're all currently off duty here on our own time to show our support for this agreement. We truly understand the troubled times that we're faced with, and we're committed to do our part. I'd also like to thank Mr. Zerlag for his leadership and guidance in helping us obtain an agreement towards this 10% concession.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there are any other comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
I just had a question and a comment, but the, in the summary, there's a mention of reduced leave time of 61 holiday or vacation hours per year. Is that tiered based on level of service? Or is that blanket? I'm going to ask Chief Mayor to respond. If I may, Chief? My notes are over.
Chief Mayor?
Mayor and council, the answer to that question is no, it's not based upon seniority. It affects everybody equally.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for the chief, or is that the mic?
No, Mayor.
Anybody? Okay. And thank you for your efforts on this, too.
Certainly.
Okay. Mrs. Bittner, the vote, please.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Councilman Howelak?
I just wanted to make a brief comment, because, you know, the, I imagine this council is going to be unanimous in its vote here, and it was unanimous in its vote for the TPOA contract, what was that, two years ago or last year? I think it was about a year and a half ago.
2008?
More than that.
No, it was more recently than that. Because they had actually, you guys had gone without a contract for quite a period of time. I lost my train of thought. But I had actually, I guess I just wanted to mention that something had come back to me, that, you know, certain members of this city council had certain deep cuts that they had desired the police department to take. And it would have been unusual, because this city council has been, I think, pretty consistent about the 10%. The issue that I've had in the past with the 10% is 10% of what? But that being said, I just want to start off by saying that I will indeed be voting for this contract. It's not to say that this is the perfect contract, and I know a number of different members of the union don't think it's the perfect contract either. And perhaps that means it is the perfect contract, because nobody's happy and nobody's quite terribly sad. However, the members of the union and the city also need some finality on the matter. Indeed, the resulting contract appears to mirror the desires of the majority of the city council. The problem with this contract, in my mind, is that it addresses an area of compensation, namely direct pay, which indeed is not even really a major issue, at least not for me. The portion of compensation that needs to be addressed, not just with this department, but across the board here in the city, relates to benefits. And we need to have a thoughtful discussion among stakeholders, meaning those that work for Troy, those that live in Troy, and those that represent the residents of Troy, in order to ascertain the long-term appropriateness of such things as longevity pay, ratios for defined contribution, and defined benefit ratios, excuse me, defined contributions. The police department serves as an integral part of the community, and it is imperative that we provide continuity and certitude about future compensation for those who serve this city in that capacity. Thus, sustainability of pay and benefits that has the support of the community at large plays a critical part in this equation. I just want to add that I'm glad that there will not be any layoffs in the department this year.
Further comments before we have the vote? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may we take a brief?
Pardon? Oh, yes. Next, which is a traffic committee recommendation.
Oh, thank you.
And minutes regarding the intersection of Rothwell and Provincial.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
This is a little confusing because we have the traffic committee recommendation and then we also have a management. So I was wondering if there was perhaps we would hear from management on that.
Before we have resolution?
I think so.
So you know which one we're going to have?
I do.
Okay, good idea.
Thank you. In my recent memory, there's at times been different recommendations with various committees, but not so much with the traffic committee. This, I think, is the first time there's been a bifurcation between recommendation of management and the recommendation of the committee. And to help clarify that, I'd like to have Mr. Miller respond. Mr. Van Dett, our city engineer, his son is being deployed to Iraq tonight, and so he's sniping with them in Germany and couldn't make it tonight. But Mark is a very competent villain and can take care of this matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. The committee did recommend no signage at the location. And what the traffic engineers have done is they've taken a look at this intersection and applied the different standards of why a stop sign should be at this location. And it's not because of volumes, it's because of an obstructed area. And through calculations in which traffic engineers do, they calculated that you must slow down to at least 10 miles an hour to maneuver through that intersection. And so therefore, our traffic engineer, our city engineer, and our consulting traffic engineer do recommend that there be a single stop sign at that location. And to allow the through traffic, it's a T-intersection, and to allow the traffic to flow through the intersection on the continuous cross street.
And that way, it'll be clear with the stop sign who has the right of way.
Correct. And it's more for the safety because the traffic engineers have determined that you must slow down to at least 10 miles an hour to maneuver the intersection. So therefore, the warrants are met for a stop sign because you need to stop totally. Now, I mean, they do not recommend traffic engineers yield signs anymore in these situations because it's confusing and really does not do the job either. And also, they do not recommend stop signs for the whole intersection at the three locations because they want the traffic to continue through and then the traffic to stop at the T because you have to slow down to 10 miles an hour because there's obstructed vision. Now, I've reviewed the minutes, and I'm not sure exactly the exact reason why the traffic committee has recommended to not have a traffic measure. I mean, they talk about speeding, but they're more concerned about speeding down Provincial, I believe.
Rothwell.
Okay. Councilman Kerwin, do you need for the clarification?
I don't. I would, if I may.
Yes.
I would, but I would, I'm just going to change it a little bit here. It would be resolved that a stop sign be installed on the Provincial northbound approach to Rothwell.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we resolve that a stop sign be installed on Provincial northbound approach to Rothwell.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Discussion, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
The, there was some discussion as well that one needed to slow the approach to Rothwell because of some landscaping or such obstructions at the corner. Are those within the scope of ordinance?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-7 is the application regarding transfer of stock for Mr. Pisa.
Madam Mayor?
Incorporated A and B. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move the resolutions, both A and B, A, request to transfer stock, and B, the agreement as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve resolutions A and B as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
I-8, application regarding new wholesale liquor license for Flats Distributing LLC. There's A and B again. No more? Counselman Slater?
I'll move Resolution A, new wholesale licenses, and B, the agreement.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve resolutions A and B as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they wish to have exempted?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Fleming?
I'd like to exempt J-4A.
J-4A.
For F, and also for E.
A, F, and E?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? Okay, can we have a resolution to approve all others?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen that we approve all the consent agenda items with the exception of J-4A, F, and E. That will be considered after this vote. Discussion? Oh, second?
Support.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Fleming, you asked for J-4A, F, and E.
Yes. On A, I have a question for management. This sidewalk replacement, when sprinklers are damaged, is it the responsibility of the contractor to replace those sprinklers? And if so, what's the timeframe for doing that?
The contractor does do the repairs, and it depends on some coordination with the homeowners and parts availability and so forth. Part of the repairs that were being made, we were trying to spend our funding for this year, we had to start and remove the sidewalk and get it in before June 30th. So we have now currently about three works, three weeks' worth of restorations, and we're doing all those repairs and sprinkler notifications so that people can turn them on, check to make sure that they don't leak once those repairs are done. If there's some specific locations, we need to get a call from those folks because there are times when we're not aware that a sprinkler line was nicked because they only excavate, you know, inches, three or four inches, just enough to get the framing in there. And, you know, not always are we aware of it. So if there's specific situations, people have questions, have them give us a call because we have a staff person that's working on that. And Tim, what number would that be? That comes into our general information number at the DPW. They'll take that, put it in our city works because our staff person is out in the field pretty much all day long. If they do want to leave a voicemail for him, they do that, and then he'll get that when he comes in at the end of the day and contact him.
Okay. Just to report some dissatisfaction in my neighborhood specifically, they damaged sprinklers. Personally, I called the contractor's number twice, spoke to a live person once, left two messages. After one week, nothing was done. I saw your person in the street, he gave me this number. I called. The next day, they were out there and repaired the sprinkler. And, but I wasn't home. I told him I would be home when I called the contractor, but I wasn't home, so it wasn't able to be tested. So I still had some other damage, but I dealt with that. But down the street, on the way here tonight, I was stopped by a resident who had another sprinkler company out repairing his sprinklers because the job that was done wasn't adequate. And it was because they weren't tested. But no one was called to say, "We're testing the sprinklers." My point is, I think we should renew this contract. I wouldn't vote against it. The point is, we need to hold these people accountable. Also, when they poured the sidewalk in front of my house, there was two inches of water under the walk because the sprinkler had flooded the night before that was broken. I forgot to turn it off. I'd been watering it by hand, I forgot to turn that zone off. All they did was put down plastic and poured right over the water and just pushed out. I talked to your person on the street, he said that should be okay. I don't know if that will eventually settle or not. But the point is, I think they can do a better job. They didn't notify any of the neighbors, to my knowledge, and especially me and the ones I've talked to, that they were going to be even doing work in the area. And then when they did damage, they weren't very responsive to repair, and still, there's some damage there.
Well, letters went out to all the residents that had work that was going to be done in front of their homes, and notices should have been placed on those folks, you know, when that work was going to be done. We'll double-check that because that should happen. But as far as restorations, that information should come to us at the public works so that we can coordinate that, not the contractor.
Yes.
Because we don't know who they're calling, why that list doesn't get done, but we have to be the responsible party in public works. That's why all those calls should come to that 524-3392 number.
Yeah, and you did respond, but there was no notice put on the door. And if there's a notice put on the door, probably that number should be put on there so people would know. I'm just saying this for other neighborhoods. I'm dealt with, I'm okay. But if we're going to approve this same company, Rotondo, to do work in the future...
We do have that number on the notice that goes out that work's going to be done, the original one that's mailed out to everybody, too.
Okay.
Okay. You want to do E and F, too, and then move three?
Yes, let's do that one, too. Let's do E first.
Right.
Okay. The, I read all the background information on the Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center boardwalk replacement, and I appreciate that there was a low bid of, I think it was 39, no, a low bid of $24,700 on that, and we have elected to let city employees do it. Do we have a projection? We're not going to replace the whole, just to clarify, we're not going to replace the whole boardwalk, we're just going to replace sections of it. Do we have any idea what that might cost?
Mr. Schilling?
I know it's going to cost less. This is one project where I actually walked the project terminus, the boardwalk area, with Steve Pallata, who's in charge of building maintenance, as well as Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director. And we all three agreed that the scope of work was such that we could save money by narrowing the scope of work, making some repairs instead of replacements, and doing it in-house. So the answer is that it'll be cheaper than what was budgeted, and I think the report indicates it'll be done by September of this year.
It did. And who would be paying for that repair?
Well, the funds that are budgeted, I mean, the capital projects would be transferred, essentially, instead of going to a private contractor, we're going to be doing it in-house, whatever our costs are for that.
Be substantially less, though, I'm sure.
It'll be less. I don't know if it's going to be substantial. I'll give a final accounting when the work is done. I think it'll be, well, I'll say substantially less.
Okay.
At least 15%, 20%.
Want to do F, too?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item F refers to the renewing the option for the quarterly newsletter, Troy Today. And I see the cost is $39,000 estimated, and not to exceed an additional 10% of the additional $3,900. Does this include the postage? It's just the printing?
No.
So printing is this cost. What is the postage for this? It goes to every household in Troy?
It's the bulk postage rate.
The postage is about $5,700.
If I may, while Ms. Stewart is there, we have advertising in this, well, what does that?
We accept advertising.
What revenue? There's one page of advertising there, I think.
That's all we, I've been able to sell. I have tried to get other businesses, but that brings in, I'd have to double-check. It depends on the size of the ad. A full-page ad is approximately $1,500. So we probably make, we made $1,500 for that one page.
Yeah. So we're spending roughly $45,000, $44,000 for this, and it's a pretty good communication piece. But I think what the question before this council is, is this $45,000 we want to spend now to communicate? Or we're evaluating how to communicate and what to do on the communication, how to improve the communication in the city? Should we save this, not do this now, wait until we get the communications specialists that we're going to be working with to see if there's a better way to communicate, maybe in Detroit Times or something, rather than publishing this? That's the question before this council, I think.
But there are certain time issues with it, and this company's giving us the price that they gave us before, and they're also giving us a break on the price for the color sections. Actually, they're doing that, well, as Mrs. Stewart could explain it better than I...
Well, it's half of what the last company was doing it for. And the issues, I know it says the $39,000, but we've been averaging, because we've cut our pages by quite a few, we're averaging that each, the last four issues have cost us approximately $8,000 each. So this is our only communication tool right now.
This is the only thing we send out to everybody.
I understand, but we're signing up for one year. We may change, we may change our plan in less than a year.
Could we cancel?
Further questions or discussion on this item?
City manager.
Mr. Schilling?
I'd like to ask Cindy Stewart if it's possible for us, if there is a communication policy that comes in and says, you know, indicate to the public through this venue instead of a mailing, is it possible for us to, say, cancel the third installment or the fourth installment without penalty?
I don't, that might be a question for Susan with the contract.
Is Susan still here? Well, let's ask Susan. I don't know the answer to that question, but that would be something that we could possibly do, is have an exit clause for it. I do know that it would be important to have this quarterly newsletter go out because it's more than just marketing the city, it's talking about what programs are available for residents to partake.
I fully agree. I'm just wondering if we need to do it for a full year, so I appreciate.
Sure. I don't know the answer.
And one of the issues, if I can let you know, one of the issues, the summer issue always is our water quality report that we by law have to put out. So we've saved a lot of money by putting it in the Troy Today.
Mrs. Leirstein? Does it have to be a full-year contract, or...?
The contract does have an out clause so that we can terminate, but we do have to give them 30 days notice, written notice.
Thank you. And this, this may very well be the best communication, too, we have. I don't know, I just want to keep our options open without the committee. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to move?
Yes.
The items A, E, and F?
Yeah. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves consent agenda items J-4A, E, and F, which shall be considered, which is, approve J-4E and F.
Seconded. Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Halliwellak? Is that right? That we approve items J...
Four.
...J-4A, E, and F. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halliwellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we'll go to council comments, and I have in front of me the press release that was sent out about Troy nearing peak hour usage. Be careful to adhere to the underground sprinkling restrictions to keep costs down. And that is for outdoor automatic underground sprinkling systems to be between the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And that we appreciate folks that are complying and would ask that all businesses and residents that have sprinkling systems do that. It helps us with our water rate, which helps everyone. And if they have areas that need special attention because of the hot weather and all, things can be sprinkled by hand above ground, and perhaps we'll get some rainstorms that'll help us, too, which would be nice. But this is really something that I think that most people are capable of doing. And if they have new landscaping or... if they have new landscaping or new grass that's put in, that that is exempted, they're allowed to water those, is that correct, Mr. Miller?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there anything else that's exempted? That, that allows people to water at those other times, other than the, just the new landscaping?
Just what you mentioned in hand watering.
Right, okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem Kerwin, you had some items you wanted to bring up.
You had mentioned, Madam Mayor, your state of the city, which is coming up.
Right.
And again, this is just one of a series of public engagement strategies that we have been embracing at this point. There have been 12 community conversations, library matters scheduled for have taken place. Again, council members have come to those, and we're fortunate to have the library director for, for members of our community who would like to know more about the library millage. Those are posted on our website, and they've been in both of the local papers. Another opportunity to see some of your council members would be at the blood drive. I did want to mention this. We do have a community-wide blood drive, and some of us do give blood. And this is, this is the neat one, because it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday all over Troy. Our residents can call, or anyone who's interested in donating may call our Community Affairs Department, 248-524-1147. Monday, the San Marino Club is hosting. Tuesday, it's neat, if you haven't been to Athens, hi, to donate, it's wonderful. Our own Troy Community Center, Wednesday and Thursday. So 2 to 8 on Monday at the San Marino Club, 2 to 8 at Athens on Tuesday, and then 9 to 9 at our Troy Community Center on Wednesday and Thursday. We are, American Red Cross has told us that Type O donors are truly needed at this time, the universal donor. Thank you, Councilmember Beltrame. All blood is needed at this point. They're desperately low on some of those, so please, people, please call, sign up, donate some blood. There's some neat, something you can win that's pretty cool, so maybe we'll see you later in this week. I also have a response, but I've talked a little bit there. If I could come back around and then respond to something that Councilmember Haralak said earlier, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else have council comments? Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes. Just wondering when council will receive another budget update based upon our latest labor negotiations, so we can reflect that spending in the budget. And just curious, we have a date for that?
They were to be quarterly ones, weren't they?
We spoke about a quarterly budget update, if you will, and then also a biannually of every six months budget amendment. And so, and, you know, and the first quarter after this budget is September 30th, so sometimes in, sometime in October.
Okay, any other items? Okay. Mayor Protem Kerwin? You said you wanted us to come back after other people had a chance.
I did. I just wanted, I know that Councilmember Haralak read some comments that he had composed while we had our police officers here in attendance. And one thing that was mentioned was a desire in terms of health, the cost in terms of health. And I, whereas I truly understand for most employees that one should look at some of what we are paying in terms of health and the percentage, and you see that clearly with the governor's direction on the 80/20 for educators, Madam Mayor, as you're well aware. However, when we're talking about police, and perhaps the chief would come forward, because I really want to ask, when we look at the actuaries regarding service in public safety, and I want to speak to both fire and police, in terms of that career and life, how does that shorten one's life expectancy, chief, if you will?
What I can, I don't have the date in front of me. I didn't expect to be addressing this. I can go, based on common knowledge from the various seminars and conferences I've been to, is that the life expectancy for police officers and firefighters, and not as well versus firefighters, is shorter than it is for people in other professions. A lot of it has to do with the shift work, the stress, and some of the problems that go along with that type of work. So there was definitely a shorter life expectancy.
Thank you. And again, my colleague may not be aware of our own retired fire department personnel who have suffered from cancer. There's no doubt that those going into burning buildings and facing some of those situations, inhaling what they do, that they are at greater risk. And we know from studying this, and I think that the numbers show that it's a 10-year shorter lifespan. So as we look into health and ways of, of, of trying to curb spending from a city point, I really think we need to think in terms of what a public safety commitment is in terms of life and limb. And we saw a wounded wing back here today, and other public sector employees, so I did want to keep that in mind.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other council comments? Councilwoman Beltrame, you said something about...
Madam Mayor, I asked during the reply to public comment that we come back to the discussion on whether or not to post employee salaries and benefits on the website. Councilwoman Haralak is right. I've seen it, the school district does do this for their employees by number or by title. In our case, we are not required to do it. School districts are required to do it for any employee that makes over $100,000 a year. Our school district, Troy, has chosen to do it for all employees. On the positive side, from a transparency standpoint, the one thing it does do, it allows the citizen to see that much of that total compensation that we see in flyers and circulars includes sick days that are never paid, workman's comp that's never paid, some vacation days that go unused and not carried over, as opposed to the potential what if the sky fell on every employee and we had to pay every dime that we allowed. I think reasonable people looking at such a list would go, okay, if you can't carry sick days over and you can't carry vacation time over, I'm going to look at that in a slightly different light than I am the direct costs. And, you know, one employee said to me, and I thought about it, when I get my paychecks, I don't look at FICA as a benefit. I look at it as something that every employer has to pay. And when you compare public sector employees, not all of them do have to participate in Social Security. Our employees do. So those are the kinds of things that, from a transparency standpoint, would be positive. I think that overall, we gain more than we lose by putting it out there, but other people may have other opinions.
Anybody else want to comment about...
Mayor?
Yes.
I just...
Councilwoman Slater?
You know, it's a thought that maybe we should think about, and I'm certainly not prepared tonight to do anything about it, but I'll think, I'll think about that.
I think that we should think about the pros and cons, and... We could make a, I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but it is something that's been brought up, we could think about. Any other council comments?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater? I mean, Councilwoman Haralak, pardon me?
No worries. No, I just wanted to add that, you know, it seems like so much of the discussion is about who gets what, if that's this year or last year, and I wanted to take it a step farther so that we could show before and after concessions as well, so that, quite frankly, we can just say, look, here it is, you know? And so I see that as a benefit. I think it's also important that we not have names on it, like the school district just has title. You can find the pay of every single employee in the entire state of Michigan, whether that be the janitor at your local unemployment office, if they're employed by the state, to your social worker, all the way on up. It's, and I actually do it by name. I'm not really sure that's such a good thing, but they do it by name and by title. So this is, this is, you know, and I would, it'd be nice if people would look at those because then they could find out, you know, you cut through the, kind of the rhetoric, if you will, to see what, you know, the root of the, the real root of what's, what the discussion is and should be. So I don't, I don't see there any downside to this, but I see there are a lot of benefits to it, especially if you do the, the second step to show the before and the after, to see the reduction in salary and benefits.
Further council comments at this point?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Just to follow up on that, should we put this on the agenda? On the agenda? We don't really want to get into it tonight, we haven't had a lot of time to think about it, but should we put this on the agenda for a future meeting?
Mr. Slater?
As with many items, Your Honor, I'll, I'll do whatever the governing body wants me to do, and if there's a consensus from the majority of council, I don't have any employees to be able to do this. I'll talk to Tom Darling and see what his, what his rate will be, and it'll be $95 an hour, essentially, and if I'm asked to do that by the majority, I'll just tell Mr. Darling to work with the HR department and finance and produce such a list. I would like it to, I'd like to have some parameters. I'm not sure exactly what to include, what not to include. But again, it's your option. I'm at your, your pleasure to do whatever the governing body wants.
Okay, further council comments at this time? Okay, we'll be...
Your Honor?
Oh.
I had a question, if I may.
Yes.
Historically, on performance evaluations, they're normally held prior to the city council meeting, not subsequent to it. The resolution that was passed indicated just a closed session, and normally they're held after the council meeting. I'd like to request, if it, if you can all make the accommodation, to go with our standard protocol and meet either 45 minutes or a half an hour before July 25th's meeting.
Sometimes we do them after, like tonight, we're doing it after. Sometimes we've done them before. I have no problem with meeting beforehand, and if there's anything that's, we don't finish up, we could always finish up after, you know? But we need a resolution, I think, because we have it set for after, so we need to first suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilwoman Haralak. Discussion on the suspension? The vote, Mrs. Bittner, on suspension of the rules?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Motion passes. And then I'll move a resolution to hold the closed session at 6:30 on the 25th, instead of after the meeting for the performance evaluation for the city manager, as indicated in, it was already scheduled for the 25th, but for the 25th...
Just to set the time.
At 6:30 now.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Haralak?
Wouldn't it just be easier to call a close, to have a vote, to enable us to go into closed session on the 25th at 6:00, because this will actually require us to have a formal technical open meeting so we can vote to go into closed session?
No, it won't. No, it won't. Mrs. Blom? If we vote tonight?
First of all, one thing, just a minor correction, too, you need to include a place, and that was not, if you're doing a special meeting, you need to indicate where that meeting will be taking place, and I don't think that that was indicated in the motion. But as far as, yes, if you, I mean, it is a meeting that's for an earlier time, and you will have to, Councilwoman Haralak is correct, in that you would have to have a resolution to go into a closed session because it's a special meeting, and so...
So we have to start in here, do that, and then go in there?
And you will also need to allow for public comment, as you do with every other public meeting.
Then it's almost easier just to do it at the end, because I'm not going to go through two public comment sections next meeting. So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
We've done it before.
We have, but I don't remember having a public comment section with it. Yes, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Is it possible for us to move to amend the agenda for the meeting on the 25th, to put the closed session at 6:30 and convene the regular meeting at 7:30?
Convene the regular meeting?
Just, just changing the agenda. It would be a motion to change the agenda, to move the closed session scheduled for purpose of city manager evaluation to the beginning of the meeting at 6:30.
I would defer to the parliamentarian and let her answer that.
If you were to set the closed session at the beginning of the regular meeting, then it would still be considered part of the regular meeting, so you could have the public comment after the closed session, because you'd be convening the regular meeting, going in a closed session, coming back into the regular meeting, and then the public comment would take place after that.
I would move that we have, that we reorganize the agenda for July 25th with the closed session moved to 6:30 rather than after the conclusion of all other business. And...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Haralak?
I guess my, the question was, and I don't have the open meetings act in front of me, so I don't really know the answer, is can we call, if we call a closed session...